I think we're a minute or so over and I would like to call council to order and I'll ask councillor Littwan to read the, bring the council to order here.
Good evening, everyone. In the spirit of reconciliation, we acknowledge our meeting place. The city of Flynnflon council chambers is situated on the ancestral lands of Treaty V territory. We would like to acknowledge that we also work in partnership with First Nations in Treaty VI and X territories and the Maite Nation.
Thank you. We'll have a reading and confirming in minutes with councillor Slip.
Be it resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held April 2nd, 2024 be adopted as received.
Need a second there. Councillor Richardson, all in favor? And it is. That takes us to number three, which in this case is the Imagine Northern presentation. We have Crystal Colt and Emily Roberts Young, so I invite you to take.
So, thank you Mayor Fontaine and councillors. We're really excited to, can you hear me? If I stand up? Yeah. Okay, so we wanted to share what, this has started with the Flynnflon Arts Council and we'll see what happens next with this project called Imagine Northern. It was funding that was received by Canada Council for the Arts in the province of Manitoba, but Flynnflon played an integral role in this project and it's being talked about all around the province for sure and I know within Canadian Heritage rules in Canada Council. The project funding is coming to an end at the end of this month, actually. Emily Roberts Young, who will be your next tourism officer, was the project manager for this, which is just coming to a close. So I thought this would be a really perfect opportunity for us to share very, very quickly about what this project was about. If you hear more of it happening, it could very, very well be at the next beginning.
Awesome. So I'll just run through some of the key objectives with the project. So some of our main goals, especially being in northern Manitoba, we noticed across the north, virtual connectivity is a really big issue. And so part of our Imagine Northern, we'll go into it, but we provided some internet infrastructure as well as some technology pieces to help out communities such as Thompson, Churchill, the PA, OCN, Brochet, Flynnflon, and I think I may be missing one. Snow Lake.
Snow Lake.
I did miss that one. And so with these tools, we're hoping to provide economic growth opportunities for each of these communities and different revenue generating streams. And coupled with those two as well, we want to celebrate our artists, especially our indigenous artists. We know there's a lot of barriers in terms of the natural art that we want to explore to remove those barriers to entry as well. And then we also have professional development on here because we are working on a food collaboration, Food and Beverage Manitoba. At the end of March, we hosted a Northern Arts and Food Conference in the PA and we were partners in planning and initiating that. And so these are kind of our four breakdowns of those objectives. And so our first pillar is our Northern Champions. So like we were saying with the virtual connectivity, there's of course that internet and technology side, then there's the people to spearhead it. So our Northern Champions are arts leaders in each community that are advocating for their region and their distinct needs and gaps. With this, we also have web development. So we provided a piece of our grant to make websites for each of the communities, provide them with an online presence. We did what we call a shop in the box. This is where our infrastructure for our internet comes in. But we gave a fully portable hard case of a barcode scanner, a label maker, a label printer, a scale for drop shipping as well for the e-commerce side, and a Rome kit for Starlink. And then our last piece is our asset database. So we know for granting and stuff, metrics are very important. And so with this, we have a survey that we've been rolling out to collect information on the artists in the north, who they are, where they are, and what they're doing and how we can help better serve them. And so this next slide here is a picture of said boxes. We rolled these out at the Northern Arts and Food Conference. So that second picture with Cassandra and I, that's all the pieces taken out. And all of these are completely portable. So our champion in Snow Lake, for example, if they wanted to set up a pop-up store in Tidouli Lake where there's no service, they can do so with these pieces.
We're planning to use that, the Starlink, for our blueberry jam. So we'll be able to live stream for the vendors that are coming in that want to use tap or POS system that we will be able to provide the service. Our Starlink is already, we know Cranberry Portage is interested in being able to have it for their artisan markets. So we're thinking that if the Tourism Bureau would like it as well, it is available. So it's not just for the art community, it is for our community. So if there is somebody that's doing something in the forest, they want to be able to have Wi-Fi, it is available.
A really cool example, actually, is in the PA, we had Rocky Lake Birchworks, who makes birch syrups, take the Starlink into the bush outside of the normal service zones and they livestreamed how they tap birch trees and get their product, which is really neat to see. And then I'll let Crystal pick this one.
So we're just going to give you, there's a little video of each of our champions essentially that we have and who they are. Hopefully you can hear them.
Hello, my name is Kristi Jonge, I'm here in my hometown of Flynnflon, Manitoba. I'm the Northern Champion Coordinator for the Imagine Northern project. So basically, a champion is like an art leader for each community and I'm kind of the go-between between each champion, finding out what's happening in their communities, who their artists are, what are their needs, what are their dreams, and forwarding that information back to our project manager and just trying to make these things happen and supporting our artists here in the north.
I'm from Arisworks.ca and I'm a Northern Champion for the Snow Lake area. An international indigenous artist for over 10 years and a member of the Canada Council for the Arts. We only known artist who uses red hot butter knives to create my art. It's been a real challenge to bring out the arts and culture of the north and we need great assistance breaking the mold of the one industry community. There's massive potential here in the north and we've only begun to discover and connect it through the Imagine Northern program.
My name is Cheryl Antonio and I live in the PA. I've been a volunteer with Imagine Northern for several years now and most recently have become the Champion for Pasqueagcree Nation, the PA, the Arm of Kelsey, and the Outland Communities of Cormorant, Muslake, and Wanless. Through this volunteer work, I've been so fortunate to be able to create relationships with many, many artists throughout the north. We have created routes to trade supplies and to exhibit artwork and to promote each other. The support has been amazing and I'm so proud to be a part of this organization. Mi guey.
I'm with Churchill Creative Collective, TDC, and Imagine Northern. I'm the Northern Arts Champion for Churchill Manitoba and I'm really excited to see what kind of projects that we got going on in the future, what we currently got going on in the future of all Manitoba as a whole. So let's go Northern artists, keep north strong.
Good afternoon. My name is Janet Head. I'm from Pasqueagcree Nation. Part of the Champion Program for Northern Manitoba. I just started and still familiarizing myself with the program and what it entails for the OCN members. I know I'm networking with the community members as well and meeting with the chief and council as well, the elders and the youth of the community and finding out what the needs are and finding out that we do have a lot of artists in this community and they're not given that opportunity to showcase their art. So this is going to be an awesome program for them to be able to showcase their art and get more exposure for their, for their skills that they, that they have.
Hi, my name is Andrea Stevens and I am the Northern Champion here in Thompson, Manitoba. I have been working with the Organisation Mall of the Arts for about five years now and very much appreciate the opportunity to be partnered with the Imagine Northern network to showcase our artists throughout our northern communities as well as newly partnered with North, well, Maker Space here in Thompson, giving our makers in Thompson and surrounding communities a chance to create and learn and continue to show that throughout the Imagine Northern network. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cassandra and I'm the Project Manager at the town in Broyam. I'm also the Northern Champion for Flynnflon. I'm our resident MNT and yeah, hi.
Hello, Atlante. My name is Victoria Redson. I'm Denai Sulfene Inehito from Etentue, the Barren Lands. I'm the Northern Champion for Lak Brochet and Brochet and I represent a ton of incredible, amazing artists. Our people are so talented and powerful and we're a small community, but we have so much to show the world and to share with the world. So much knowledge and so much love and art. Yeah, there's a lot of beadwork artists in our community. There's tons of painters and mirrorless and moccasin and makluk makers. There's, everybody, you know, is a hunter. Everybody picks medicines. It's a really community-based community in Dalitue and Etentue. And I'm here to help bring the communities together and bring the art together to share with the world and to share with other communities. Yeah, and I really appreciate Imagine Northern for helping us and for being such a strong support of myself and our community. And I'm really looking forward to the amazing things that we do in the future. Masichok.
So those are all of our Northern Champions. And then just to kind of jump back into the brick and mortar of it, we've kind of broken up our project into a few phases. And so with this funding ending, we're calling this our first phase. These are some of the achievements that we've accomplished over the past little bit. But these kind of go back to the pillars and the objectives that we were talking about earlier just with the technological pieces, the Northern Champion Network, the brand development, a digital strategy, economic development as well. And so when we look at this, we see ourselves as 75% of the way there in terms of the basic infrastructure laid. But we have about 25% remaining to get where we want to be before launching into phase two. And so phase two, we want to extend past the communities that we already are in. And so the pink dots on the screen are where we are, the green squares are where we want to be. And we have making some moves with this. I had some conversations this past weekend with Leaf Rapids and so we have a representative there interested. We had some talks with Saskatchewan as well. They're super interested in what we're doing here. But once we kind of have our foundation in northern Manitoba, we want to do that interprovincial growth.
So this is our last slide. So this has to do with the big, the grant I applied for actually on behalf of the city of Flynnflon for the Sustainable Development Goals. We still haven't heard whether it's successful. It's over a million dollars over three years, a project. But within that project, it addresses many of the elements that Canada's 2030 goals are for sustainability, for globally. And, and one of the elements is the Imagine Northern project, which would be helping to maintain that further. We've also had further conversations with a very big investor firm in Toronto Sector Inc. That, that might be interesting in supporting this project. But it's, we know that when we had the presentation in the PA, the Canada Council for the Arts, which funded 250,000 towards this as well as Canadian Heritage and the, the province are all very, very much aware of what this project is about. And because it's been, it was created here in Flynnflon to support the north as the leaders that we are, I just really wanted you to be aware of it. And we'll see where it goes, whether it does continue or not. But it's a very exciting, a very exciting project. And it's either at the end or the beginning, I can't tell you which way it is. But it's, but it's a very wonderful, wonderful opportunity. I'm very, very proud to have called myself a Flynnfloner and been stewards of this. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On behalf of the city, I hope it is just the beginning. It seems to be like, you know, having made all these contacts that you have.
We're all going to be together, but I am hoping that we're going to be able to, you know, find some funds. And then the next step will be the collective understanding from the Imagine Northern team that it be housed, I'm hoping in Flynnflon. But the, the next conversation that the Imagine Northern team wants to do.
Good luck with that. All right, we move on now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Emily, use that crystal. I'll move on. Oh, thank you. Thank you. I'm excited.
All right, so we'll move to resolutions then. And councillor Dallas Monk.
Check schedule 17-02. Be it resolved that the account in the amount of $700,000.747 be approved for payment.
Need a second there. Councillor Slip, all in favor? That's passed. Councillor Dallas Monk again.
Temporary bridge financing new Aqua Center 17-03. Whereas the city of Flynnflon entered into a contribution agreement on January 21st, 2022, under investing in Canada Infrastructure Program for the construction of the new community Aqua Center and Recreation Facility. Project number RN-CIS-CCRIS-1018. And whereas the financial contributions from all the parties of 8.7 million could take up to March 31st, 2026 to finalize and receive payment. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Flynnflon enter into agreement with the Royal Bank of Canada for temporary short-term financing to assist with cash flow requirements during intervals between claims made to funds received while the project is under construction. Further, be it resolved that the city of Flynnflon open, sorry, a separate bank account, two account for funds received and expended specific to this project and only for this project.
Yeah, need a second there. Councillor Richardson, all in favor? Councillor Hanson.
This is 17-04, final reduce speed, final reading. Be it resolved by law number 2024-04 being a bylaw of the city of Flynnflon to establish and reduce maximum permitted speeds for vehicles to be done and finally passed.
Okay, second there. Councillor Slip, all in favor? Okay, done. And let's see, councillor Hanson.
This is 17-05, final reading, local park, park in the main area. Be it resolved by law number 2024-05 being a bylaw of the city of Flynnflon to amend by law 5203, a bylaw of the city of Flynnflon for the regulation of traffic and park will be done and finally passed.
Second there, councillor Eagle, all in favor? And it is passed. I'll move. Okay, 4-6, and that's councillor Richardson.
Flynnflon Fireworks Committee 17-07. Be it resolved that the city of Flynnflon provides support to the Flynnflon Fireworks Committee in the amount of $1,000 be approved.
Second there, councillor Hanson, all in favor?
Then I have another one. Trout Festival Fishing Derby Donation 17-08. Be it resolved that the city of Flynnflon contribute $500 to the Trout Festival for the Flynnflon Fishing Derby.
Second there, councillor Dallas Monk, all in favor? Passed. And the next one is councillor Eagle.
Yes, thank you. This is Resolution 17-09. Be it resolved that the agreement between the city of Flynnflon and Archase Metal Construction for the structural repairs to the Flynnflon Public Library be ratified and agreed for signature by the proper officers of the city of Flynnflon.
Second, councillor Hanson, all in favor? Okay. Councillor Slip.
The Animal Control Report, Mr. Mayor, 17-10. Be it resolved that the Animal Control Report for the month of March 2024 be received and filed.
Second there, councillor Richardson, all in favor?
And while I'm at that last meeting, we talked about getting the statistics for the fire chief report and also the animal control report. So I'm just going to read those out for the, for the animal control reports.
Please do.
Calls received were 25, 23 residential and two by Canada Post. Seven dogs were captured, one was turned over to the SPCA rescue and five were redeemed, which I imagine means they got them back. Cats, one was captured and one was thankfully redeemed. One thing we want to talk about though is 90% of the calls to our new animal control person, Teia Rogers, are made via Facebook post, which is fine, but not the best. Seven complaints have been made, tickets will be issued. But we strongly suggest that the public give Teia Rogers a call to report any animal control situations. Her number can be found on the city of Flynnflon website and I am sure we will be posting and advertising her amazing number for people to get a hold of in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think with that, we move to adjournment?
So who?
Pardon me? Oh, just a second.
I'll take it back.
What's that?
Are we adjourning?
Well, yes, we will. Then I'll read something off.
So who?
Okay. And I just wanted to congratulate on this. I'm sorry, I meant to do this, but I think after the meeting is just as good. I'll congratulate Joey Lee's for the RBC 2024 Community Ambassador Award winner. He got a $2,500 donation for this and Joey's giving that to the Ruth Betts Community School, where I understand he volunteers. So that's, that's pretty nice to see that. I think they said there was what, three in the, in the league?
Every, every team puts a candidate forward, three finalists, and Joey was the ultimate winner.
So, very nice.
Yeah.
And it couldn't be a nicer fellow. So congratulations. Hope and do questions for the press?
All right. First question. One second, I'm going to get this far enough. Wanted to ask obviously about the pool bridge financing that was mentioned here. Just in, in dumb guy talk, basically, what's the meaning of the project?
What is, so we received all of our provincial funding upfront. So that's already sitting in the savings account. But the federal government funding, so over three, 3.4 million, something like that, whatever it was, we have to file, we have to spend money first and then we have to prove we spent it. Then we have to file a claim and then we wait for them to process before we get the money that we spent to cover. So this, this funding is only to help us from the day that we send in the claim, we spend the money, to the day that we get the money from the federal government that should be paid to us. And so it's very short term. It's not long term at all. It will be, actually essentially should be done by the end of December because then that's when some of that federal government money will come to you again that we currently have. Anything with that, that would be, you can talk about that.
Okay. Also wanted to know too, because I mentioned it one of these meetings before was, say, hoping to extend the, the, I don't remember exactly how that date was referred to, but there was a date attached to that original funding. Now, but at some point, I think next year, you're seeking to get an extension on that. Was that extension the reason?
Yeah, actually, we just received a letter back and it's not so much the extension of the funding, but the project as a whole. The project as a whole, based on the signing of this original ISIP grant, has been extended to March 31st, 2027. So that's how long we have to spend, not just their money, but all of the money that we're going to be looking at and ending the project.
Okay. Also wanted to know, because one, I thought at the last meeting, we were at or the meeting before that, we were talking about construction for the pool getting going very shortly. And then obviously, last week, we got annihilated the snow. Has that been any sort of setback? Did construction have to stop during that or like, what were we looking at?
They did. They just got their internet up and down.
Yeah, but they did leave for four days, just during the storm. They had enough time to come set up. They had the trailers there, the port bodies, all their equipment. And then the snow hit, so the team went back to Winnipeg, I think for four or five days. But yeah, back out again.
Okay. On a similar subject too, obviously, like we remember, I thought long ago, last summer, I believe the summer before that, when we had that disgusting one, like hour of rain and that caused so much havoc for city infrastructure for however long. Was there somewhere in fact to that when the snow fell last year? Is there any sort of issue with that with city infrastructure or city works?
Well, other than it pounded out some of the potholes, but otherwise I don't think there was any. It wasn't, wasn't as costly as that rainstorm, that's for darn sure.
And not as bad as we thought it was going to be?
It was more gradual and they were under control and they spent the weekend working on that sort of thing. But I don't think it was equal to what happened last time at all.
Well, I'm, I'm not trying to suggest that it was equal. I'm just trying to use it as like an example. The last time there was some sort of weather-related catastrophe, it seems a little bit mush for the snow that we got. But I just wanted to know if that meant any sort of headache for city works, basically.
I don't think it cost us anything more than every other day would.
Okay. All right, fair enough. Also wanted to ask about the fireworks donation. I know the city hasn't always donated to the fireworks committee in the past. I don't know if that's something that was done last year because I can't remember, but.
Yes, it was.
We've always donated to the fireworks commission, committee, always.
Always?
Always. I can never remember a year with this.
And this year, the donation is the same as the year before and that donation, I believe, if memory serves, is the same as the year before that.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any sort of attachment to this money? Like is there any sort of, I don't know, like be spent for? Is it just directly to the club or the commission?
It's just a donation.
Just for fireworks. That's what they do with it.
Hell, they just blow it all up.
So when people like that funding, like if they're nonprofit or they're doing the festival or like we'll just use the fireworks, it's an application. So in that application, it has to say what their budget is, what they're spending the money on and where they're getting other revenue. So this money is actually going towards the purchase of the fireworks, according to their application.
Okay. That's what I was trying to ask and stumbled upon.
Last year, it was $22,000 actually spent and this year, their application is projecting 17 to 20.
Okay. Also, we mentioned here about the library structural repairs and that Archase gets the, gets to deal with that. Are we looking at a particular timetable for when these repairs would be being done?
I have not been made privy to any timetable. I haven't talked to Ted or, or Archase or anybody. But I know the library is excited to get this work finally underway.
And we just approved it tonight, so there's nothing.
Yeah.
Now, things can start to move in motion tomorrow morning.
Well, in the quote, it says when everything, like when we approve it, it says when they're going to start.
Okay.
Oh, did it?
Yeah, yeah.
And do you remember that date?
So if they're saying completion date, I don't know the start, like that could, the completion date, end of June is their hard line.
Who? Okay.
Yeah.
End of June?
End of June.
Cool.
Yeah. According to their bid and their timeline and all of that.
They wrote a lot of that exterior work.
Yeah, we only had two bids come in and there was about $200,000 difference between them.
Okay. I didn't see anything about that being yet, so that's why I asked. Also, since, I mean, since that's not in there, since there is information about this project, there was a, a price tag floating around about that and the scope of project of what was going to be needed. Are we looking at all the repairs that the library needs in one shot? Are we looking at some of them now and some of them later? Like what are we looking at?
I think it was a complete package, wasn't it?
Pretty comprehensive, yeah.
Yeah.
The main thing was the structural work and then also some stuff on the exterior as well, like.
That is the, that, that, the exterior stuff is the structural stuff.
Yeah, some brick.
Yeah. So there's a beam hidden in that, in that cinder block that needs to be beefed up.
Yeah. That was the, and that was all, that all came out as a result of that closure a little while ago, right? This is where we kind of decided and noticed exactly what needed to be fixed with the project, moving on.
We had engineers come in and stabilize, so it wouldn't go out worse.
Okay.
That's what they did.
Great. Just had a question, kind of more for clarification really, but I know the Imagine Northern presentation here came in from, from Crystal and Emily earlier talking about the project. I was a little unclear about like, is there official city involvement in this or is there not? Because I know this was something that Crystal started when she was with the Arts Council, but now unless something's changed, she's obviously a city employee. Is, what sort of purview does the city have over this? Do they have it?
There's no funding involved from the city in any of this. And so, and Emily is an Imagine Northern employee, you know, a city employee, although she moved over there to the regional economic development conditions tourism person while focused away on temporary leave. And so that, there's that relationship. The Arts Council has been involved as an overseer and so the one grant application that Crystal had put in is a city grant. And so then we'll see what happens if we get that grant. We will know that answer there.
Okay, fair enough. And the last question was, do we have any data for the recent budget? All right, and the last question was, do we have any data for the recent budget?
You know what, I have some information for you for this.
Oh, I'm always interested in that, in what do you got?
The first notice for public hearing is going to come out, not tomorrow, but next Wednesday. We will have a second notice two weeks later and then the public hearing will be reached about. So whatever the data is close to the other day.
Sounds good, that's it for me. Raf, you got some?
Nope. How are we?
How was he?
Anybody that, we're good, well then enjoy your evening.
Hey, there's a volume.
Thank you, everyone.